I'm just going to tip.
We are, I believe, already in open session. Correct? So we have returned to open session?
Because we just voted that.
Is that true? Yes. So this is our reorganizational meeting. In our policy, each school committee at our first regular meeting following the town's annual elections elects from its membership a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary, all of whom will hold their offices for a term of one year or until a successor is elected. In the case of the regional school committee, because the town of Sherburne moved their election to a date that was after our last meeting in the spring, in June, we were unable to do our organizational meeting, so that is the first order of business. Now, on our agenda, it has community comments first, followed by organization, and I would like to take a motion that we switch those two items and reorganize, and then continue with community comments. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Motion by Lynn Collins. We have a second?
Second.
Second, Kate Potter. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. So we will do our reorganization first, and then we will move forward from there. I would like to invite nominations for the office of Chair of the School Committee.
Madam Chair, I think that's the role of the superintendent.
It is the role of superintendent, sorry. It's been a long day. I would like to turn this over to Mr. Smith, who will start this process.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the Chair of the Region School Committee. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Kate Potter.
Kate, I'm going to ask you for your consent. Do you consent to be the Chair of so elected?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'm going to declare that the nominations are closed. May I have a second motion to nominate Kate Potter as the new Chair of the Regional School Committee?
Lynn Collins, second.
Any discussion? Then I will do a roll call vote. Kate Potter.
Kate Potter, yes.
Maggie Sharon.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Lynn Collins. Lynn Collins, yes. Tracy Mannion.
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Then the motion carries on a four-nothing vote. I'm going to turn this over to you, Madam Chair. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm honored and proud and scared, but I know I'm joining a team of amazing people who care deeply for students, staff, and our communities. We have big tasks ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to really focusing on the exciting work that we've been elected to do and working all together. So, thank you. And now, we need a vice chair. So I would like to call for a nomination for a vice chair.
I would like to nominate Lynn Collins.
Should I go through the questions that you went through? So Lynn, over. Lena, do you accept this role I've voted in?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful. Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
Thank you.
Okay. If no other nominations, the nominations are closed. May I have a second nomination?
Aye.
Aye, second. I'm the last second. Any discussion? Okay. Then a roll call vote. Maggie Sharon.
Aye.
Lynn Collins.
Yes.
Tracy Mannion.
Tracy Mannion, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Great, thank you, Lynn. Look forward to working together.
Thank you, I'm very excited.
And I would like to make another motion to nominate a secretary. And I'm happy to nominate Judy Miller, who is not able to be with us tonight, but has given her consent, I promise. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Okay. May I have a second, then?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Any discussion? Okay. Then roll call. Tracy Mannion.
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Lynn Collins.
Lynn Collins, yes.
Maggie Sharon.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Great. Look forward to a good year.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so now, we're going to move to our second time for community comments. And I would like to just read our public comment preamble to remind people. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. For community comments, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and whether you live in Dover, Sherburne, or Boston, or RDS faculty member. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. Tonight, in order to allow time for school committee to conduct their business and out of respect for our invited guests, community comments will be heard for a maximum of 10 Do we have any community comments? Okay. Thank you for hearing that. Then Superintendent Smith.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is my first as superintendent in-person meeting. I had the Zoom meeting in August, so I have to say, although there are some restrictions, it is so good to see everybody in person. And I also want to make the statement that going forward, I think there are going to be some decisions that we're going to make, whether in-person or Zoom, really depending on the large group anyway. So I want to start by doing something a little bit different, so we shared presentation to all of you. So first of all, I'm going to start by talking about, I think just like we are excited to be here in person tonight, staff, many of them hadn't seen each other, and certainly all of our teachers, our administrators, adhering to the restrictions, the masking, all of the things. Board to open up that morning and talked about your special thanks to the Mudge Foundation for new stage curtains until they are I R F for your many performances. You're very fortunate to have the type of donations, foundations, and support. I want to thank them for being present, or members from each of the school committees, I should say. And I started out by telling people a little bit about where I Sherburne and how beautiful it is. I told them I was very of excitement that you feel like your couple left, but I've met with just the district, things they wanted to share with me, your priorities about in education, this being the start of my 44th year. On the Student Opportunity Act for Equity in Funding for All Students Across the Commonwealth. And one of the things I shared could get, and I mean as a group, not just personally. And one of the things I always talked about, you're for Dover Sherburne Commonwealth. You were one of, I'm going to guess, probably very few at that time. You also, by October, had made forward into my palace evening. It was put together by your, when, you know, we truly had to pivot. And I goes, I'm not going after that video. There's no way I'm going to go in the district. My husband kiddingly said to me, I said to my assistants, I just want to make sure, just keeping my notes here. For 15-year members, 20, 25, 30, knowing a long time, come up in a little bit. Here you have the cares, your people that attained, things that were said to me was, you know, you meet those new members, you know, welcoming mentioned. I can tell that already there's a relationship in people Sherburne, the governor bringing in the National Guard, for I think four of, you know, some of the people that, your buzz is rolling, but admitting to every school on opening day. So it was great, that was your, yeah, that was your earlier start with your elementaries. And right away, you know, I need, one of the pictures that you will see is we finally had a whole group of young kids that they can't wait to see her to school. Also, without operating, they were taking part in the lessons, they were paying, they were doing of our attention. I have to take into almost a year and a half. So in our state, it is required, they're coming back full-time in-person learning. Here about the CARES Act, your ESSR 1, 2, and 3, there is funding administrators having conversation, and that we will continue to, again, talk about union counselors if that needs to be paid attention to. I also want to, districts all over, try to run over here at 8:46, because there was a moment of silence. They'd come with middle school students, there was a moment of silence. Our elementary students did appropriate entry. Okay, I think at this point, we've got the pictures, I'm just going to take a look at before we do the video. Make sure I have the right schools with the elementary, you guys in at lunch, we're making sure that we're with each other in desks. This is Jill Thedore and all the little kids that crowded into the nurses' office, things are happening. My favorite were your high school students to have opportunities for lunches with your students, always one of the best things I did. I meet with them alone, without other administrators, and we're able to hopefully have some open conversation, as we do opening day. Thank you so much, Beth. I hope you did not think I was kidding when I said. On another note, one of the things when I came here from telling my editors at WBUR, which is the productions, and they had reached out to ask me to be part of a year from the Raymond Public Schools. So I recently had a call about bringing Beth Director, Carrie Jung, to invite Beth in October, so we will be featured along the center there, but obviously Beth you can speak to. Thank you. Sorry, just a nice slide here. Students returning to full in-person learning environment for all, distancing isn't required. You know, but we are looking at, certainly on the 19th, our buildings, you know, our students. So one of the things that we're doing, and when you look at, may turn 12, you know, just, you know, happy birthday, and your families, if they need any outreach on where to go. So our goal is to get, sit and have discussions with your health and hygiene committees, Sherburne pediatricians, working in some of the best hospitals in Boston, so that we're facing here each and every day, and that truly has been something that, so we continually, I also want to tell parents, thank you, parents, I know you continued this, or, you know, I'm not trying to pivot, but things change. We're doing everything we can to put strategies in place to keep your kids safe in advisor committees, state health experts, key decision-makers, using timely data and metrics that are available for our department of public health and your boards of health. So again, and, you know, we certainly welcome finished learning, that is going on in your classes right now, as students come back to really assess where they are. Structures put in place, many opportunities, so we're looking at your accelerated learning for your students also, for those students. Like, oh my God, the roar of a crowd. You know, honestly, I kind of looked out, peeked around the corner, I believe it was your girl soccer.
It was, yeah. Tonight's field hockey.
Tonight's field hockey. So upper elementary to your middle school. So those are obviously our priorities. I will tell you, and this is information for our staff members. The other day, we were having a conversation, I think earlier this week, and I had said to Jill, she was talking about being able, being a newbie, she said, yes, you know, Superintendent, you're in there. And when we went to look at my vaccination status, it wasn't in there. So I immediately had sent the document right to her. So again, the staff members, our custodians, our food service, anybody that is an employee of the Dover Sherburne School Districts, and we have overall, in your district, in the region itself, we think it's about a 99% vaccination rate. When you look at the district as a whole, we still had some with the elementary, we would still get at least 97, maybe higher. So your percentages are very high with your staff, with your vaccination for your staff. And I think, let me just, just priorities. So again, I guess in summary, I'm going to say that schools have successfully opened, students are in-person working collaborative learning environments, and I want to make sure everybody understands, we remain cautious. Testing forms have been distributed for COVID-19 testing in schools, for symptomatic testing, test and stay, pool surveillance testing. I believe Kate McCarthy is going to talk a little bit, parents for your students to take part in a number of those programs. And I know, Kate, you're getting into it a little bit deeper, but we want to say, this wasn't an easy process. There were parents sometimes that had concerns, wanted to pick two of the programs when you're talking elementary and not a third. And one of the third, the concerning ones was the pool testing, the surveillance testing. And we ended up, you know, making phone calls, and I'm not encouraging this at all, but there is an opportunity if the parent chooses to opt out. I think when we see, and the numbers are getting up there, we want, there has been concern, I've had letters from members in the community, and we clearly understand when you talk about pool testing for our older students. And I can't tell you that that's not something on the horizon. So as parents are signing those consents, it's important, even if it doesn't exist at the middle school yet, we have two of the test and stay program, the symptomatic testing program. So because of that, we are asking for you to sign, so if we do have to pivot, if we go into using it for secondary students, we already have those consents. And I'm going to also remind everybody, this week, on September 16th, we have Yom Kippur, there is no school that day, I know that's a sore tell you. I am so pleased to have had the opportunity to meet and start to work with your school committee, all 16 members. I'm not sure there's a larger, three separate school committees in the state. And that takes some effort. And I don't mean effort, what I'm seeing about that is, we have committed, and I think I have, along with the superintendent and my leadership team, talking about two retreats coming up. Those are going to be publicly posted meetings. So the retreats will be on for the locals first, which would be 10 members, two five-member committees, on September 23rd. It's going to be, I believe, 5 to 8 in the evening. The region will have their retreat on September 27th. That also is a publicly posted meeting, it'll be the same 5 to 8 o'clock. And some of the agenda items are going to be overviewing the roles and responsibilities of what school committee members do and superintendent, to make sure we have a clear process. We're going to develop operating protocols for school committee. How do we operate? We're going to share that widely with our community, so they understand we want to be transparent, we want to pay attention to their concerns, and come up with our protocols that we commit to doing on all three committees. Setting goals and priorities with the superintendent, and I want to be clear, when you have an interim, it's a very different process. So with an interim superintendent that's here for a year, one of the things that we can talk about are the so-called priorities, the so-called big rocks that the superintendent will lead, not only in the district with their leadership team, that doesn't mean anything, everything is addressed, but these are the things, the big rocks you want the superintendent to pay attention to. I think it's important to note that when you get your new superintendent, training is important for all your school committee, because you're evaluating that superintendent based on the Massachusetts edeval system. And it's very different as far as the standards, and I know you've done the process before, we have a lot of new members, and so that Dorothy Presser, who's wonderful, she's a field representative for MASCE, Mass Association for School Committees, she was a former school committee woman, I believe Chair in Lynn Field. And I know she's been here in the past. I've worked with her before, again, I think she will share very valuable information for you, for your community. We'll also talk about communication between the superintendent and the school committee. You know, the communication that works, we're going to share that with the public, so the public understands how you receive information and how we're able to communicate with each other. And then the other thing, and this is not, these are not publicly posted meetings, when you become a new school committee member, one of the things by law that you have to take part in is what's called charting the course. And as you can imagine, with the pandemic, this has not really been held in person, and I had members, when I met with your newer members, tell me how frustrated, they thought it was disjointed, you know, they struggled with it. So we have the opportunity, first of all, I know we're going to be working with our attorneys to talk about open meeting law, public records requests, you know, how we can make sure that we're within legal guidelines there. That'll be professional development for any of our members that want to take part in that. And also, MASCE is willing to come to the district and not only do it in-house because of how many members we have, if we have additional seats available, you can invite some of the members that are other school committee members in your locale. So I'm really excited about that, we'll talk about that at the retreats, we'll come up with some dates, so we'll be able to take part in that. And that's going to be the end of my presentation, and I'll answer any questions before I go on to my team.
Thank you so much. Right.
I just wanted to take a moment, it's not a question exactly, but just a comment to say thank you, I mean, to all of the team for all of the work that went into starting the year, you know, the retrospective, I have had the appreciate seat already, so I've already been through the ugly crying. But it is really important, I think, that we do pause to take stock of all of the body of work that's gone into this past 18 months, and moving on from here, and taking away the silver linings, and so thank you to all of you. And specifically with regard to the upcoming retreats and the professional development offerings, I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership on helping us to organize to do that. I think that has been, both with new members coming and going at the region, and also with the locals, in the context of a pandemic, with a lot of things and other pressures on people's plate, it's definitely something that has been a need that we collectively have, and I'm appreciative of your leadership in organizing these opportunities for us, because I think that moving forward, it's going to be really important that all 16 of us understand how we're organized, what our roles are, how we communicate with one another, and specifically the unique situation of a regional school committee. Because I think it became clear to me in the last few months that that's, you know, not commonly totally understood situation. And I think it's really important for our whole community that we're all listening to. So thank you, and I'm really looking forward to taking advantage of these opportunities.
I wanted to say, ditto, to what Maggie said, that it's so exciting to hear these sounds outside. I had a meeting outside a couple weeks ago, outside the middle school, and kids were coming in and out to audition for the play. My own boys at the middle and high school are happily back doing their things, and it's, it looks seamless, but it's been a huge amount of work, and I can't thank you enough. And that's the third time I've seen that video, and I still cry. So, I mean, that just goes to show, to Maggie's point, it's so important to stop and reflect on what everyone has been through, you know, parents, students, staff, leaders, everybody. So, thank you again for that. Thank you. And can we get a copy of the slide deck, Kathy?
Oh, absolutely. I can put it in your communication. But I know, is it, it's also up on the web?
We'll add it to the packet on the website.
Yeah, I know your video is, but it's there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Beth McCoy.
Okay, again, I'll be brief. Thank you all for watching the video, and while it became a McCoy family project and brought the four of us together in various capacities, it really was, you know, the goal was to capture all of the work of the entire team and all the hard work that went into those 18 months, and I'm excited that we, I haven't done my children's baby books yet, but gave it time, kept it under the pandemic, so we'll have that to look back on in 10 years. So just a couple updates about teaching and learning. So we launched our school year, actually, in mid-August by bringing all the leaders together. Superintendent Smith was mentioning how she always looked to Dover Sherburne for the opportunities and the resources, so needless to say, you can imagine her face when we brought her to Hail Reservation for the leadership retreat, if she had to use a porta potty for two days. But we had, we had a great time, thanks, silver lining of the pandemic, is we have the Wi-Fi hotspot, so we brought Wi-Fi to Hail Reservation, which was exciting, as well as some fans. The first day, we talked a lot about the equity audit, the how and the what of the equity audit. And the second day, we spent a lot about the supports that we're offering for students around academics, behavior, social emotional support, especially coming off of a pandemic. Highlights, again, it'd be the porta potty, some team building activities, including rock, paper, scissors, with Steve Goodwin, if you ever have an opportunity to play Steve in that game, he is our champion, so I wish you all the best. We also had a number of opportunities that we provided to our teachers over the summer for professional development. Some of them are listed here, I know it's hard to say, but all in line with the silver linings and our portion of the graduate. So professional development around authentic projects, learning in the brain, design thinking, project-based learning, the flipped classroom model. And then after the leadership retreat, we actually had three workshop days here with teachers. One was the instructional leaders, K through 12, so our curriculum leaders, our team leaders, our department chairs, talking about the equity audit and how we're going to be looking at our curriculum as a school. Then we have another workshop day that Kate helps lead for student support, and how we're going to make sure that we're providing all that we can for our students moving forward. So we have our guidance counselors, again, our team leaders coming together. And then lastly, we had World Savvy come and work with our middle school and some of our high school teachers around using case studies to bring together cultural competence, sustainability, and bringing the maps and the stories that we read in textbooks and social studies to life. So that's, that's super exciting, so very busy summer. So that said, launching into the school year, we have a couple of instructional goals that I wanted to bring to your attention. All of them are in support of the four school improvement plans and the overall district's improvement plan, and these three goals have been made options for the educators to adopt as part of the evaluation process. So again, you have that thread that goes all the way through with the entire district moving in the same direction. Silver linings, I think one of the takeaways from the silver linings that we tried to tie into many other initiatives that we have going on between the RDS and Challenge Success and Innovation and Port of the Graduate, kind of the common denominator of all of these things is student engagement. So we have a big goal around student engagement, and we'll be looking at that through observation, shared best practices, providing professional development for teachers. You've heard me talk about student support, you see our frog leaping here. So the commissioner and Dessie has talked about learning leaps for our students this year across the Commonwealth. So instead of going back and reteaching what students might have missed last year, we are progressing them to the next grade or the next course, and then as experts and support personnel, figuring out where there might be gaps or needs for support, and then filling them in. So it's kind of like each frog has their own path across the lily pads to the other shore. And as you see, we brought our teachers together, our leaders did the same thing, a team building activity where they had to make their way on the lily pads, lily pads across the river. And there was a lot of takeaways about both equity and student support in that everybody needs to cross the river, that the people who cross first need to go back and help the others, so lots of analogies with equity and MTSS. In support of that, thanks to our CARES money, we are piloting Panorama, which is a data dashboard that will allow us to take all of the data that we have in Aspen, the literacy benchmarks, the math benchmarks that we have K through 8, and have them all in one place. And we can look at student profiles, class profiles, school profiles, across all three domains, academics. across all three domains, academics, behavior, including discipline and attendance, and their social emotional wellness, thanks to the surveys that we're now doing with kids. So we'll be able to identify kids through universal screening a few times a year to talk about the kids who, by data, need support in addition to the ones that we see, you know, anecdotally or observationally in person, and make sure that we have the supports in place. Lastly, I'll mention, again, a pilot. As you know, we've had literacy specialists added to both elementary schools, Pine Hill and Chickering. This year, we're piloting academic specialist at the middle school, who is supporting the MTSS work, supporting teachers, making sure that the practices they do in the classroom are differentiated, that it's not one lesson for all the kids, that the kids get what they need. And then helping identify the kids who might need small group or individualized support, and how are we going to do that through small group classes or H block and those sorts of things. And lastly, the equity audit. Kathy and I are in frequent communication with NYU. They've met with our leadership teams during the retreat. They're coming to all four faculties for their October faculty meetings to talk about the what and the how of the equity audit. And the next step is for us as a district to name a 10-person advisory committee who is going to advise them in their work in collecting data, making sense of the data, and then communicating the findings to the community. So this is not Kathy and me on the advisory committee, this is representative of all the stakeholders. There's like three students, a parent, a community member, an alumni, a teacher, an administrator. So once you fill all those slots, that makes 10. But then we want to make sure that we're representative of diverse perspectives, diverse backgrounds and identities, and bringing together people who, you know, are not only invested in kids and supporting all kids, but are also willing to listen to other perspectives. Some might have been part of DSA, but we want to make sure that at least half of them have not, to get some new voices and thoughts in the room. So next week, we'll be an email and a short application process to apply to be on the advisory committee, and NYU is going to be doing the selection to make sure the puzzle comes together well, without any input from those of us who live and work here and love our stakeholders. So that's that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
You're remarkably thorough.
Exciting, so.
I have questions, then I listen and you answer them. It's just delightful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to be wearing two hats tonight. The first hat will be some special education updates at the region, and then we'll be, Jill and I will be talking about the testing. So just for special education, I think I talked about this a year ago when we were hopeful that the middle school program that we have running in its third year now, the GRIT program would be starting at the high school last year. But with everything that happened, we just put a pin in it. And so we did roll out the GRIT program at the high school, and we have really mirrored a lot of what has, we have done at the middle school in the GRIT program. And the other piece we did this summer was we brought in a group from Newton North that has had a similar program in existence for about five-plus years. So the staff that I had worked with, they came and met with the middle school and high school program to just talk about their systems, their structures, and just to collaborate and have that professional development, so that was very nice. So we've actually, this year, been able to begin the program with existing resources. So a teacher that we already had on staff, and also the school psychologist is splitting her role between this program and her evaluation duties. So that's been nice this year. I'm not sure if that's going to be sustainable long-term as the program grows, but that's been a nice piece this year that it's gotten off the ground. So it has similar elements where it supports students with social emotional challenges that just show up in very different ways. There's not kind of one student that this program works for, it's very flexible and unique for each learner. So we do have students through all grades nine through 12 at the moment. So that, and we will be collecting, you know, we're working between the six through 12 program for data collection. So as it's been in existence, even though it's been a funky kind of 15, 16 months within some of the time where the middle school program began, we have been collecting data, we have been reflecting on that, and we'll continue to do so and be able to really think about if, what we're hoping the program would support really is making an impact. I'm going to put my other hat on unless anyone wants to ask me questions right now, but.
I just want to clarify, so this is happening in parallel with the BRIDGE program?
Yes.
And so it's a separate program with a slightly separate profile of students?
Yes, all students in this program are on IEPs.
Yes.
And it's not necessarily a short term. BRIDGE shouldn't really be more than 45 days, that's the model of the BRIDGE program. So there might be students who kind of may go to both, like maybe, you know, we're not sure how that will interact, but that program also is in frequent communication together about clarifying criteria and things like that. But this program is solely special education, BRIDGE would support either a student on IEP or not.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do you bring you actual hats to change?
And the thing that I've been doing with most of my time. So we have been able to launch testing, and really this week, all test formats are available throughout the district. I know I've, probably everyone's seen all my emails, but we do have, I think, a higher participation rate than we had first thought at the region than we would have because of how many vaccinated students we have. And so I've tried to provide some clarification, I know Kathy had mentioned this too. This testing is open to everyone. Vaccinated students at the moment, because of the protocols, symptomatic testing would be the main test format that they'd be able to access. But we also don't know how long that's going to be the case, so that's, so those are the percentages. And we also, at the region, for students who are unvaccinated, they would be able to participate in the test and stay program and symptomatic testing. And vaccinated students would be able to participate in symptomatic testing. And Jill will jump in if I'm missing anything. So I know Kathy had talked about our vaccination rates, we're still working on all the student data. We know the community in itself has a strong percentage, it's just kind of desegregating the data. We haven't been able to review a solid number right now, but we know we're in a really good place with comparison to other communities, but just don't know the exact number. And we are happy to report the high rate of staff and faculty for vaccination rates. And just the last, I know that, you know, this is the region, but this week we were able to kick off pool testing at both Chickering and Pine Hill. And we have had around 70% consent rate, which is much higher than last year at the elementaries. It was around 30% last year, so that's been nice. And we've been managing that with the help of our vendor, as well as Adam Henry, who's back helping us to coordinate the testing. Any, did I miss anything, Joe?
No, that was great.
Yes.
If other people have questions, I'm going to overtalk. Okay, I have two questions. Is there value, or is it worth, or is it a headache for you guys to just voluntarily ask 12 and older families to produce vaccine records if they want? Like, I'd be happy to scan my kid's vaccine to the nurse if that would make it easier.
I think we have the capability to find out that information, but I know that, do you want to talk a little bit about the holdup there?
Sure, so there's two, there's two ways that we can gather the information. It's by parents emailing us, actually, there's probably three ways. Parents emailing us, or when families need to submit an updated physical exam for, say, 10th grade students, sometimes the vaccine is captured on that physical exam update. And then there's a way for the nurses to link directly through the MIIS, which is the immunization database with the state. Now, unfortunately, our electronic health record has a bug in their system right now, so none of the districts in Massachusetts can sync with the Massachusetts Immunization Registry at the moment, none who use our, the electronic health record that we use, which is called SNAP. SNAP, they are working on it, and they say it's going to be done by September, but we all know we're at September 14th, and we'll see what happens. So we've kind of held off on asking for paper records in the hopes that the bug would get fixed this month, and we can just pull that information automatically. As you can imagine, like a stack of 600 records to go in and manually enter is just time-consuming, so we're hopeful that SNAP gets the bug identified and fixed and that it will be fast for early October.
And Plan Number Four, which is hot off the press, is that just like we have to go in and validate our students' health and contact information every year in Aspen, we found out that Aspen is HIPAA compliant. So we are working on a survey that will go out to families that we can collect the information of which vaccine brand, the date of the first dose, the date of the second dose. So that's kind of Plan D, if the other ones don't work.
Yep.
And then my second question is, for students who are vaccinated, who, I believe this was an open question from our last meeting. If a student's vaccinated and is determined to be a close contact, they don't, I believe, need to quarantine or anything. But A, would they be notified by the school? And B, would they be eligible to participate in test and stay if they wanted to, only because my knowledge of kids who've been positive for COVID at the high school is that they are vaccinated?
So the question about notifying.
Yeah.
All close contacts will be notified regardless of vaccination status. So if your child is vaccinated, you'll receive an email. If your child is unvaccinated and determined to be a close contact, the nurse is going to call you and go through the steps of what needs to happen next. It's just a, it's just a faster method for us, who are trying to cover all of the close contacts in one school day and get the information out as soon as possible. So vaccinated students will be notified of being a close contact by email because no action is needed for those students as long as they remain asymptomatic. And then the question about, you mind if I, you have a second part of the question?
Can vaccinated students participate in testing?
So that's a really good question. We haven't been asked that before, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head, to be honest. I would want to say yes, like that seems reasonable to me. If somebody wants to participate in that, I do know that the state is warning us that supply for the antigen kits is very limited. And so they are being very careful with what they are telling us to do with those kits. So I think that would be something that I would have to bring back to my nurse leader colleagues at the, at the health unit at the state to ask them.
Okay, so then however that works out, my follow-up last question is, would you, as a medical professional, advise any things, advise if a family gets an email that their vaccinated teenager has been exposed to COVID, to go to Beacon and get a PCR test on day three or five?
Yeah, always, always, it's always a great, I mean, this is what we want to promote, is testing. Whether it's, whether it's us doing the testing, because we are allowed to and we have the supply, or please go and follow up regardless if you have symptoms on day five. That, that should be the messaging, and that's something that we don't easily kind of.
Okay, and students who are vaccinated who go to Beacon, don't have to stay out of school until they get the results if they don't have some.
No, so our, so our rules have changed a little bit since last year. Remember last year, any person that had a pending PCR test for any reason whatsoever wasn't allowed to blink until the test result came back. We don't have that this year, okay? So if you're vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, but you choose to go get a test on day five because you are a close contact, you can still come to school. And then if that test result comes back positive, then we go from there. But it's not, that rule has gone by the wayside from last year.
That's just a lot of the questions I have had.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, those questions haven't come to me yet, so I appreciate it.
I have one similar one. A lot of the, you know, a lot of children obviously get their immunizations at their pediatrician, and then it's really easy to send it in, I'm assuming those are all sent them to MIIS.
Yeah.
But now with COVID, it's a little bit different. I see people taking their children to CVS and Walgreens and Foxborough and all over the place to get these shots. Are they hooked in to MIIS? So every single dose that's given in Massachusetts is in the system?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Now, that being said, the same issue that I had when I went to sync Superintendent Smith's immunization record with the state database, for some reason, it didn't sync, and they couldn't find her, or my system didn't see it the same way the state does. So we've had those issues, but again, that's, those are few and far between. Sometimes it was the, I noticed with staff, their record is listed under their maiden name. We have them listed in our system with their married name. So we're figuring it out as we go along, but everybody should be in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Even a flu shot record, like some staff members have done, and oh my goodness, that'll bump them, every flu shot for the past 10 years has come off in their record, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any more questions?
Yeah.
One, just, what has been, what are the concerns that have caused the slow sort of rate of participation in the, in the pool testing?
I will say the question, so I'm, I send most of the communications, and some of the things that I got back are the questions about if my child's vaccinated. So specifically, the, at the region, they say, well, why, why do it? And if my child's sick, I will just take them to their doctor to be tested, which is actually what we want to hear. The symptomatic testing format, we're hoping, isn't very frequently used because it means someone's sick in school.
Right.
And really, what happened all last year and why we were in such a great position that we were was that people kept their kids home when they were sick. So I think it's, why, why go through this if my child can't really do any of the three tests? So I do think that my answer back is, everyone's welcome to consent because you really never know when we could pivot, and then you don't have to do like another blast of emails going out and all of that. So I would say, at the region, that was kind of the main hesitation, and we're definitely growing at the elementary level, and things really, I think the frequency of communication kind of bumps it up, and the fact that we could opt out. I think that was another part where we weren't seeing it at first, and then we did see a burst because people said, I want to do test and stay, that's a big one for us because it disrupts learning so little, like you can stay in the building. And so that was a big push for consenting. But people really were saying, I want to do that, but my child gets bloody nose, so I don't really want to do the pool testing. So that was a lot of the emails I was getting. So I think it was just a little bit more of education of what actually does this program mean for my child? And I think it just, knowing that maybe we could shift, and maybe, you know, that piece might be what's, what's the hesitation of even that getting to 70% at the region.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Can I just make one more clarifying point about the test and stay program? Because I can't message this enough. The test and stay program is only for in-school close contacts. And so if you have an exposure that happened at a family reunion over the weekend, your child cannot come to school on Monday and participate in the test and stay. Again, I think it's a little bit of a supply chain issue with the tests, and they're reserving it to preserve in-person learning. And so just, if we can continue to relay that message to the community too, as we start to see kids coming back and participation in maybe some club activities or some youth sports that are happening, and there may be exposures there, the rules will be different in those instances.
And I think that was the same criteria we used for the AFC testing. It had to be testing that we recommended last year when we had those spots. So it's similar messaging, it's just, I think the test and stay has quite an impact.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your dual roles. Thank you, Jill, for jumping in there. And now we're going to go to our middle school. And Scott, I hope you're going to introduce Dr. Frank Tiano.
Absolutely. I, as you are aware, I will be departing in a few weeks. I just, I want to thank the school committee, both present and past, for the support. It's been a fantastic opportunity for me. The retirement system is set up in a way that it doesn't make sense for me to continue working here. I do plan on continuing working, and my wife certainly insists that I continue working. And I try to do what she wishes. But this is a fabulous place, you know, the leadership. You know, the leadership team, again, both past and present, has been incredible to work with. And parents, the superintendents, I think I counted six superintendents I've worked with in the district book as a teacher and administrator. Most importantly, the students. We have incredible students. You know, it's just, it is enjoyable to come to work every day. This past year, despite all the challenges, has been incredible. That silver lining video sums it up. I mean, there were some great things that happened here and that's a credit to her. And for me, the past 15, 16 months would not have been doable without Anna. I mean, she's a rock and I'm trying to embarrass her. But yeah, you know, it's just a great place to work, so thank you. Having said that, we have very capable hands to take over and that's Dr. Tiano. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Keller. This is a very great place to work and I'm grateful to be here. And I'm also grateful for the opportunity to be able to transition with Mr. Keller for a month and that is unique. A lot of districts don't have the forethought to do that, particularly coming off a pandemic with a lot of changes, to be able to have the coherence and the consistency for our staff, for our students and our families has just been a wonderful opportunity. As you know, Mr. Keller, he's been gracious, he's been, he embodies the school. We had a positive meeting this morning and just how the parents felt about him and some of the reactions that you folks hear, I watch him interact with students, staff, and it really is, you're going to be leaving a hole here, Mr. Keller. And I agree with you on it is a rock and together you folks have established a great working culture. And again, I'm grateful to be here and to be a part of that. And so, thank you, Scott. Truly appreciate it. And at the middle school, this is not the only change that is happening. As you've seen, the initiatives that are coming to bear, it's great work. It's the work that needs to be happening, but it's a lot. And as, if you have students in the middle school, you know that we've also changed schedules and we have also changed rooms for the better. So the work that was done over the summer was truly yeoman's work. It allows the school community to mirror the district and to focus on making connections as we start the school year. And we felt that that would, you know, through pictures, be able to develop the community connection over content, reengage with students, understand their stories, where they have been, so we can better serve them. And that's our first goal for our school improvement plan. And what's interesting, just coming here to Dover Sherborne very quickly, is the location of the high school and the central administration, it really is a community. And the connection with the high school administration, John Mann has been great in our central administrators, but also the high school students. In the picture to the right, you really can't see them, that's Mia and Miranda, who are Project 351 representatives from the middle school that we invited down to be part of our ceremony on Friday. And that is Skylar in the middle with that mural, and that was part of your update from the middle school and quite proudly, coming back and just watching our staff interact with their former students. And the fact that the students want to come back is just a testament to how things operate here. And so again, that's an amazing foundation on which to build and move forward. Just on the next slide, please. What you see here, and this is in your report, that goes the changes that are happening in the building and across the district. So as a staff, we're working to implement these changes, to develop the literacy around that, build the capacity of the staff, as well as build the capacity of the parents as we move forward, so that we can provide students not only with the appropriate curriculum and instruction, but gives us tools to better analyze where our students are, to assess them, to be able to diagnose and prescribe and put interventions in place so that we can best meet their needs. The work is happening right now in school and it's hard work, but the teams have been put in place, that foundation's been laid and we're going after it and moving forward. So we're grateful to have the leadership from the district in this particular area. Couple of quick footnotes, Open House will be all virtual and I believe that's the occasion last year through Padlet and we will have that information out to folks very soon. And Anna had put out a survey to parents regarding parent-teacher conferences, whether it be virtual and/or in-person, and providing options for our parents. My understanding, last year, parents did enjoy the opportunity to do it virtually for convenience sake, number one, and be able to have that close one-on-one time with their teacher, but also two, to be able to provide the option to invite our parents into the building because they too would like to be here against it as well. I'll leave it there, be happy to take it, Scott will be happy to take anybody and go pass my bed tonight.
Well, welcome, Dr. Tiano. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I really enjoyed reading the report. I appreciate all the details and I loved the pictures in the slideshow. I just want to specifically point out that I very much appreciated the tying of the update to the school improvement goals. I know that's something that we talk about every year, you know, that having the school improvement plans in the spring and it really was helpful to kind of see how the things that are happening, you know, it kind of creates a cycle. So thank you for the efforts to do that and for linking it to the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Go on to the high school.
All right, thank you, Ms. Potter and Superintendent Smith. I am now entering my ninth year as the principal here at Dover Sherborne. It's truly a privilege and an honor to be the principal here. Similar to what Beth had talked about, I'm really, really proud of the work that we did do these past 15 months in keeping education going and keeping a focus on students. Some things that you'll see that are new at the high school, we have shifted to yet another new schedule. This is a schedule that we had actually put a lot of time and effort into just prior to the pandemic, that we work with the middle school and high school teachers with. And one of the big pieces of this new schedule is something called the Flex Block. And the Flex Block at the end of the school day enables us to do a lot of different things. It gives us hence the flexibility. That flexibility is you can receive extra help from a teacher. You can also participate in band and chorus and as you know, through the Herculean efforts of Jeff Herman and Janice Berry, we have been able to increase our numbers in chorus from 16 to 40. Band is now up to 62. When I first came here, chorus had eight. So that's something that we're really proud of. We're solely invested in making sure that all of our courses, including our electives, receive the attention and students have the opportunities to participate in those. Flex Block also allows students to go down and make an appointment with a guidance counselor where they're not missing academic class. It also will allow them to develop closer relationships. And one of the things that we've seen as a result of the pandemic, but then also some of our Challenge Success Survey results and really even looking at other youth risk survey results, and that has been the importance of student-teacher connections and relationships. So this Flex Block, the way that Ms. Keegan and I set it up is we have three teachers assigned to 24 students in grades nine through 11. I have a group, Ms. Keegan has a group, our athletic director has a group. It's really, everybody's included, which is great. We even have some coaches who are talking about how they can get invested in this too. And they'll meet with the students for 30 minutes each day and there'll be days in which we have specific advisory-type activities and there'll be other days where they can go get extra help, they can go see their teacher, they can go to guidance, they can participate in their music programs. And then in some cases, because we are really only one of two schools for now, that has moved to a later start, it also allows for athletic dismissals for our student athletes so they are not missing instructional time. To me, that was a key component. We knew that when we made the shift to a later start, which really has been incredibly beneficial for our kids, for their sleep, for their well-being, the part we needed to focus on was what are we going to do at the end of the school day? Because not all of our school opponents have also moved to this. An interesting silver lining to the transportation issue that is now being discussed with a lot of schools, however, is these contests are being forced to start later anyways because the transportation companies don't have enough buses or drivers really to get them there at that time. So who knows that they end up panning out and may end up being something that benefits us. So the Flex Block is underway. We've seen some, you know, some early successes to it already and it's something that, you know, we'll continue to get feedback from kids, feedback from parents, feedback from teachers on. We are asking parents and guardians to not dismiss their kids during the Flex Block unless you need to. Sometimes those appointments are unavoidable and you can't because we do feel that this is really critical time for our kids to be able to access all these different opportunities. We did give our seniors the opportunity to be dismissed. They are one step away from that more independent life anyways. I think the seniors appreciated that and this way it helps us to really focus and develop core relationships with the younger students as they're transitioning into high school. So that's really kind of the big change, you know, Kate had talked about finally developing or, you know, rolling out Grit, which has been fantastic. I've had the pleasure to hire some new teachers. We have a new department chair in the mathematics department, which we're really excited about. And there's just a really positive buzz in the building. Having kids back, kids are pretty happy, they're excited to be back. You know, we have never had an issue with kids and their masks. You know, if it's down, it's an accident, sorry about that, they put it up. We have such good kids, as Mr. Keller has said, they're just really happy that they're able to have their clubs and activities in person, to play their sports, to have their drama program going. So it's a more normal opportunity. And because we have a culture where our kids go outside to change classes, because we essentially have four buildings, because technically the high school gym is separate, you have to go outside, our kids are already having those built-in opportunities to remove their mask and get a break. So the kids have been fantastic. One of the things that we're doing a little bit differently from the middle school is for now, we are having our Open House in-person. We are also providing an opportunity for families who would still rather have the virtual option to have a screencastify of an overview, just like we did last year. But we do want to have that opportunity. Now, you know, we'll be flexible and if we have to pivot based on what we see happening with our community numbers, we will. But as another way to get things back to normal and to get our parents and guardians back into our building, we are going to have at this point an in-person Open House. We also do not have the traditional parent-teacher conferences. So that's partly why ours is just a little bit different from the middle school. And then finally, I'll just say, I also want to say congratulations to Scott and what an honor and a pleasure it has been to work with you. Scott and I have had a great relationship. We've worked through some challenging issues these last few years for sure. Scott has always done it with professionalism. He truly loves the kids and they truly come first. In addition, he's got a fantastic sense of humor and is always able to give me a good laugh, even when we're directing traffic as.
You've become quite adept at that.
Traffic guards, I know, I know, I have, I have.
That's a leather in your contract.
So we've shared a lot of good laughs about sometimes, you know, what these roles sort of roll into, but nevertheless, they're being done in the best interest of the kids. We're keeping kids safe out in the parking lots and ultimately it is about our kids. So Scott, I wish you nothing but the very best. It's been a pleasure to get to know Frank as well and Frank and Anna will make a fantastic team, but Scott, you will be really missed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potter.
Thank you.
Do you have any answer any questions, high school related?
Frank will answer them.
That's right. He doesn't know that yet, be at ease.
I actually did have a question, Mr. Smith. Thank you for that presentation. And it may not be you that needs to answer it, but you had brought it up, so if anybody else can answer it. I did have a parent come to me and we were talking about transportation issues, which we're hearing all over the state. And it seems that we do, or we did, when she spoke about this last week, have transportation issues in Dover and Sherborne with a handful of kids, I think you can count them on two hands or so, somewhere from Boston and somewhere from here. It had come out that there was possibly two people here that could drive and help out with those situations, but then that never came through. And I was wondering if we're talking about making sure those kids have transportation, you know, especially obviously the Boston kids, if that's the case.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that we've worked specifically to address some transportation issues for some of our Boston kids, but then also our Dover and Sherborne kids. We, this year also extended our late buses back to four buses. So yeah, we are absolutely focused on that. And if at any time these come to your attention and you have a question, the members of the school committee know that they can always reach out to Kathy. Kathy will absolutely let me know and I will get back to you immediately because it's critical that those things are put into place so kids can focus on what they need to focus on and not have the stress and anxiety around transportation and things that really shouldn't be their problem.
Right, and I think the parents are stressed too, just so you know, because the parents are actually having to drive them and I feel terrible.
So as of yesterday, transportation's in place.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, great.
So we have a hybrid program this week and I think we have found a transportation company who's going to take us from Monday through Friday for the rest of the year.
Excellent, thank you.
But they did start transporting our Boston students as of yesterday with one of our employees, who's going to continue this week and then hopefully the transport company starts on Monday.
Great, perfect, thank you.
That's been a project in itself.
I can imagine, I can't, actually I can't imagine, I wouldn't want to do that.
Are there, and this might not be, I mean, Frank, I'm sure it's a question for you.
Sure.
Are we going to be doing anything to collect data on the benefits or the impacts of the later start? Because I know that was a controversial decision, that, you know, those of us who were around for that decision at the region, you know, are pretty enthusiastic about it. My sample of one child is really excited about his current schedule, which gives him one day in the cycle where he starts school at 11. This is really fantastic for him.
Smart planning on his part.
Somebody was, somebody was planning ahead. But I do want to be responsive to our families who are like, is this a real thing? And what is the impact on our younger students and what should we do? Is there any, like, I see lots of nodding heads.
We talked about that before, I was this morning.
We had identified some data points at the school start task force meeting, like, you know, way back. So we talked this morning about going back and revisiting those data points, knowing that a lot of them are captured anyways, just in pulling them out and looking for them, right? So we'll definitely have that on our radar, knowing that our base year keeps shifting a little bit because now we don't really have a good year to compare it to because of the 18 months we've just had. So there'll be a little creative maneuvering as far as looking at assessments, right? So we hoped, we thought we'd see better. So it's hard, it's going to be a little hard to measure that when we've come out of our half-year remote and then hybrid last year. But we'll take that all into consideration and I think there's some data points that will come out of, Beth mentioned, Panorama that we're doing now and the SEL surveys for at least the mental health benefits of what students are seeing. We talked about capturing tardies, absences, because that could play into that. So we talked immensely about this. I'm not sure if this rolled out, so we'll just go back and revisit and pull up, pick it up where we left it off and probably just to have to adjust what bases we're comparing it to.
Perfect. And then the Flex Block, which I know has a ton of dynamic opportunities, with regard to seniors in particular, while they are not assigned to a Flex Block, so they're sort of free to move about the country when they're done their class, are they able to access the extra help, the meeting with guidance, the, you know, obviously they do participate in band and chorus?
Yes, absolutely. And there actually are times in which they are assigned to their Flex Block too, in which we, like, so we held a senior class meeting, they were required to stay. So at any point, I have the authority to say, we're not going to have senior release today. So absolutely, and that's actually when they're doing a lot of their senior seminars for the college application processes during Flex. We really wanted to focus on, you know, making sure that we're providing the social emotional support, but also providing the access to strong, rigorous instruction. And by taking away any sort of distractions and to focus on that academic time, keeping that. to focus on that academic time, keeping that really sacred, and then developing something where we could take care of all those other important things. And those seminars are important, those assemblies are important, but it's critical too that we're not interrupting a math class six or eight times a year, right? So yes, absolutely. Seniors can and will take advantage of that. You know, in this first couple of weeks, I think sometimes for seniors, they have this newfound freedom. This is great. This is great. But then assessments start coming in, their seasons start building up, drama program, they know they have practice right after. They're going to start staying more and we actually have set locations where they can go in the lobbies.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much for that information.
And the reason, I was trying to figure out how to formulate my question. The band and the ability to participate in band and chorus.
Yep.
The flex block has enabled that because it banned often conflicted with other?
Other academics and electives. Yeah. So a lot of times unfortunately, when students who were highly invested in their music programs, but also said, but I want to make sure I get AP Physics, or I want to make sure I get Marine Biology, or I want to make sure I'm taking that fourth year of a language because we are a small school and we have singletons. This enables them to do, to Janice Berry's credit, music and. So that's why. And really, the band and chorus teachers have done a fantastic job with this, taking advantage of the time. Obviously, if we could give them even more time, we would. But some of that then becomes contractual with the teacher association of having an even longer day, which I'm not opposed to, but I don't know necessarily if there are others in my camp.
Right, right. That's really great.
Yeah, I just have to add to that. So my daughter, who's now in college, was a band and chorus kid and got, exactly what you're talking about, got to senior year. And because she took French, she, her junior year, she couldn't do chorus. And her senior year, she did online AP French so that she could be in chorus because that's how much she loved it. So I love hearing the numbers have gone up so high and that we've been able to do that for the kids. But also, for years now, we've been talking about, and I think through maybe the student health survey, about having, how important it is for kids to have at least one person in the building who they can go to.
Yep.
And that's different for each kid and sometimes it comes up organically, but I love the model of allowing them to build over time these relationships with teachers. So I think it's great.
And I love the three teachers assigned to a group because I think to your point about building a relationship, sometimes kids have an advisor. I work at a school that has an advisory program, but you might not jive with your advisor. And this gives you some options. And also, if a person has to take a leave or a person has to come or go, it does provide that overarching continuity.
Absolutely. That was the research that Ann and I looked at. We looked at where were some programs successful? And they kept saying, to be as flexible with advisories you can, because if you try to say, student A and teacher B are going to be together, it might not just be the greatest connection. They both may be very respectful of one another, but when push comes to shove, they may not lean on one another or the student towards a teacher for that close relationship. There might be somebody they respect, but maybe not necessarily they go to. Whereas having that flexibility of the three, we felt, obviously gives them more choice within that. And it also helps our teachers too, because for the first week when we did all those advisories, all three of us were in there. And we talked together about ideas of how to get to know this group. And we did some ice breaking activities with our groups. So we sort of learned from each other some things that we can do. And I think that that really helps too, because sometimes teachers may be highly skilled in teaching biology, but establishing strong relationships might not come natural to them, right? They might, if somebody's passionate about biology and we made this connection, but other teachers have maybe said, I'm able to really connect with kids and here's something I've tried. What do you think? And we've done that. So it's definitely a focus of ours and we think it's really important.
And just another piece, there are, I think, almost no trios, all from the same department.
No.
So I think just that other level of feeling, like special education sometimes can feel like an island, but they're in the mix with the English and Spanish. And I think so just getting to know people and being part of a team outside of your department, just more like collegiality piece has been big.
Yeah, very intentional. Yeah, I'm with a biology teacher and a French teacher. It's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Everyone?
That's our report this evening. I also just want to chime in and also mention, when I talked about standing ovation at the opening day, when it was announced that Scott Kellett was leaving, and you could tell genuinely, whether it was his own staff members, people in the district, again, round of applause, it just serves to show what kind of colleague he's been, a leader in the district.
That's because I'm leaving.
My whistling was because of that. Everybody else. John was very, Scott loves soccer, so I figured he would understand the whistling, the European style of cheering him. So I whistled.
I always kid him, when I came in the first day for my interview, it was raining. I came in the wrong way and he was very gentle with me out and he didn't know who I was out in the park.
Had I known.
So again, I wish him well and there is lots of work out there.
Yeah.
I'm sure he'll be.
My wife sends me the, posts things all the time.
Thank you.
I'm not kidding.
All right. Moving on to the warrant report. So in your packet, you have the warrants to close out fiscal year '21. And we'll start up with the fiscal year '22 warrants next month. Whoever, you'll have a new signer. Now I don't know who is assigned to sign. Whoever is going to be a signer, if they want to come in, I can give them a mini training. I do have a little staff, a warrant to be signed. So let me know and we can set up a short appointment and get you going on that. And again, these are any questions you have about the warrants or want to see them in detail are always at central office available for review for you guys. Okay, thank you. Any questions on that before, it's still you, but, okay, okay.
Perfect. So maybe I'll get some standing ovations. I think we have a pretty good financial report. So luckily, we ended June at our, your last June meeting, pretty much the number stayed where they were. Just to give you a recap, you have your general fund revenue statement, your status of appropriations with your expenditures. I included a roll floor of the E and D, so you can understand how that all shook out after the operations were closed for the year. And then again, your quarterly report for your special revenue revolving funds. We'll walk through each of those just briefly. If you have any questions, just stop me. On the revenues, as you remember, in June of 2020, DUSI was recommending that all school committees be extra cautious about what was going to happen with the state budget. And so you did take that vote to reduce your Chapter 70 revenues by $200,000 and use an extra $200,000 of E and D in its place. Well, luckily, the budget did finally turn out to be a little rosier than we all anticipated. So that additional revenue, we really did need to account for. And so that's going to make up some of the surplus that we'll talk about as we roll through all the numbers. The same thing happened on Chapter 71 reimbursement transportation. And if you remember, we took your excessive regional transportation reimbursement and put it into your reserve fund, just to cover any shortfalls that we might see in Chapter 71 revenues for fiscal year '21. Well, a couple of factors played into that. One, think about how many schools did not go to school necessarily last year where we did. And we used our buses really all four days. Because the same amount of regional transportation money was stayed in the budget, there was more money to go around to the schools who did provide transportation. So we ended up getting 95% reimbursement, which is sort of an unheard of number. We may never see that again, but for this particular year, we did. And because of that, not only do we not have a negative variance, we got a positive variance. So that's also contributing to the money that we have in excess at the end of the year. They, all in all, we had some unfavorable variances in that we didn't charge, as you saw, in high schools. And you did see lower participation in some of our activities. So we did have a little bit of that bonus money offset for the fees that we didn't collect. But all in all, you finished your fiscal year '21 revenue budget with an excess of about $109,000. On the operating side, we actually ended with a surplus of $1,001,000. And that's made up of some of the things, just to refresh your memory, $400,000 of that was really based on salaries. We had a lot of changes in positions where we had savings, approximately $100,000 in just staffing changes, a lower use of substitutes, obviously because of the hybrid model. We had quite a large savings in our facilities and custodial salaries mainly due to the director of facilities position being vacant. We had lower overtime needs and we had no utilization of all summer staff. That's almost $20,000 right there in that we normally bring in additional staff to help us in the summer, which we didn't do because of COVID. Of course, I mentioned that the $85,989 in transportation funds that we had set aside, we had to, you have to use that the next year. So although we had budgeted for transportation full in the general fund, we had to allocate $85,000 over to the regional transportation fund and use that money. So that completely fell to your bottom line, along with a national $100,000 from athletic transportation. We just didn't have as many athletic buses running. And we had a small amount of savings on your regular education transportation because we had those eight days that we didn't go to school. We also saw savings in utilities, the hybrid schedule in having the buildings closed for all weekend activities to generate savings in utilities. And just to let you guys know, our net metering credits for this past fiscal year were about $25,000. So that's netted in your utility usage. And then there was a lot, if you scan your expenditure, your status of appropriations, I mean, there were savings in every line. And mainly that was due to one being in the hybrid model. We had stuff left over here in March when we closed, that were supplies, materials that we were able to use. So we didn't have to order as much in '21. So all in all, that's how, a little bit here, a little bit there, gets you to your $1 million. So adding your revenue and your expenditures together, if you want to go to the roll floor, you can see how it all comes into play. So June 30th of 2020, your certified E and D was your millionth rate. So your results of operations and revenue adds $109,000 to that. Your operating surplus adds $1.1 million to that. But you did approve a couple of uses of E and D. One was capital for fiscal year '22. And the other one, we followed our tradition of snapshot in time before the budget's approved. Any excess revenues we have, we usually apply that to the town's assessments for the next year. So that's the $210,000. So your projected E and D at June 30th is $1,956,000. Remember, you're allowed to keep 5% of your fiscal year '22 operating budget, which gets you your $1,003,118. So that leaves us with projected excess in E and D of a little over $600,000. So we don't have access to that though until our E and D is certified. Our certification packet has been submitted to the DOR. Remember last year, I think it took us till February to get it certified. So unless we have an emergency, there's no push on their end because they're busy doing all the tax assessments. But as soon as we get that certification back and we know what the number is, we will then apply, based on fiscal year '21 assessment percentages, we'll apply that to the following month's assessment for the towns. So we'll let your treasures now.
Any questions on just the summary of results of the operating budget?
I mean, it seems to me this was extraordinarily rosy and it was rosy because we got a huge amount of money back from the state that we were specifically told not to bet on.
Right. That was one piece of it.
That wasn't us, like, over saving. No. And keep in mind, I think both towns last year were sort of saying, where's the savings from the closure, right? Part of that fell out in fiscal year '22, I mean, in '21. One is, that $200,000 that we took away would have been savings in fiscal year '20 had we not pulled it. So that's coming back. On top of just the hybrid model in general, is a less costly model to pay for. And so all of that savings then did fall out. So this is a little bit more than we've ever seen, but some of the line items and where I'm happy with where we landed, if you look at healthcare, we're finally right on. Like we had a little bit left. But that was what's generating a lot of savings for us in previous years. Right. So the things that we had control on that are going to be on a normal cycle, came in where they should have had. It's more the variable costs based on how we are operating that generated the savings. And we clearly wanted to give back all the savings to the town so they can take advantage of the opportunity that we were able to in this one particular year, not utilize the whole $26 million. Right. And because most of that savings was related to hybrid, we can't count on that for next year. We have to estimate full operations, substitute. Absolutely. So when we built our fiscal year '22 budget, those were the budget, those were the assumptions. We're at five days in-person regular operation. So this is a one-time situation based on the circumstances.
Thank you.
So any other questions on that? So just a couple highlights on your statement of special revenue revolving funds. If you remember, I just want to highlight in the cafeteria, they were running, they were going to be running a deficit. But so we took their Norfolk County assessment that they usually are able to absorb and moved that over to the general fund. So you will see on the line item for retirement contributions on your general fund, how that was over budget. But you cannot end the year with a revolving fund with a negative balance. So, and we didn't want to leave them at zero. So that transferred and brought them back to a small fund balance. On the other one, I was going to, you can see the regional transportation, how that's an in and an out. And something that we haven't seen definitely in my tenure is the use of the unemployment fund. So as you know, unemployment was a very liberal process this year where more people than normal were eligible to apply for unemployment. So we did see, at this point, we've paid about $25,000 on employment. I have some additional claims we're still disputing. But that's, wanted to highlight to you that that was actually beneficial to have an unemployment fund. We sort of self-fund ourselves. So we don't pay the state in for unemployment. We pay as we incur the claims. And just to give you a little flavor, the claims are coming from, say, coaches, spring coaches who weren't employees of ours. Employees who had worked for us and left in less than a year, they then subsequently become unemployment. As you know, they go back in time to assess unemployment cost. So it was a conglomerate of things that sort of brought us up to the $25,000. But I will have to say, that was a job in itself for my payroll coordinator along with the fraud. I know most of central offices, even though we were there at work every day, showed up on the unemployment reports. So there was a massive amount of fraud. And then just sifting through all the claims that were there, definitely was yeoman's work. So I want to thank my payroll coordinator, because like I said, that was a very nasty sort of meticulous task that she had to deal with. And then I think, I'll highlight the miscellaneous gifts. If you look at the back page detail, you will see that what makes that up. And the MUDG funds, you can see where the curtains were purchased, not yet paid for in June 30th, but that's where you can sort of see that activity distinguished there. And then as far as where we stand right now, as I said, our E and D packet has been filed. The auditors start on Monday. And I forget if they were just here. And we are currently working on our end of the year report that is due to DUSI by October 1st. And so we're on schedule to address all of that. The one last thing that I will just highlight is why we had some savings even though we were in a year where we might have had some unbudgeted expenses, is that the state and federal government did provide us with funding for those unbudgeted expenses. So you had the two grants, the CAREs reopening grant of about $280,000, and then a smaller state COVID prevention grant of about $35,000. Those had to be spent by June 30th and we did expend those by June 30th. And I listed the primary ways that we utilized those funds. Will we jump over to the fiscal year '22 update? I'll highlight that there's I'll highlight that there's three grants that we have, that will, two of them that we didn't spend last year, that we carried forward, and a new one that had just come out, so we can talk about that. So that puts fiscal year '21 to bed, until you have the audited financial statements presented to, to the committee, hopefully in January. Thank you. Any questions for Don? So just briefly on '22, you'll have your first set of statements at your October meeting, but I wanted, at this meeting, just to attach summary of the status of capital projects. I was pleased that so many stayed completed now, we actually had a very productive summer. And if you look at, at least what we had put on the docket for fiscal year '22, we had both water systems, both at the middle school and high school, had been replaced. The middle school floor hallway, so if you look now, all the floors and the common areas have been replaced, and if you go into the inner stairs, you can see the exterior stairs, you'll see new stair treads, which I think actually look really nice, don't they? And we're going to paint the stairwells, just the railings, to sort of bring it up to par with, you know, give a mouse a cookie, you've got to continue to bring it up. We were very pleased to get all of that work done before school reopened. The two projects that we have left, I could not get a paver to actually join us this summer to do a little bit of paving, so we'll, we'll pick that back up in the spring, and we still have to do some ductwork insulation on Lenquist. The biggest project that we had outstanding from the previous years was our big EMS project, and I'm pleased to say that that has kicked off, you'll see all those numbers encumbered now, the amounts all the way back to fiscal year '18, because that's where that first set of funds were set aside, and now all the funds in '19, I mean, in fiscal year '21. So that, I will keep you updated on how that's progressing, a lot of the wiring has been done, now that we have students back in the building, they're going to be working, you know, different shifts, because now they have to test all the planes, and they also have to wait until it's almost time for heating season, right, because that's important. So we're slated to have at least everything up and running on the region's campus by the end of December, and that will be fabulous, because we're at the point now where it's, we know that there's issues with our current EMS system, and so we're just, you know, prodding along until we can get this one up and running, but we know it's going to be so much better, and everyone's going to be trained to be able to use it, so the high school will be just as taken care of as the middle school. So that is all in play, and you can see most of our years are actually at zero, so we finished them out. You have a little bit left in fiscal year '17 of, it was supposed to be a feasibility study, but we had whittled it down, there was only $3,400 left. I think we are going to go ahead and return those funds back, the state doesn't like to see wholly open projects for too long of a period, and if we ever decide to do a feasibility study in the future, we would probably cover that not as a capital, but as an operating expense, so I don't have any qualms that we wouldn't, that we're giving something away, we could still take care of that at some point down the road, but I think just to close and clean our books, we plan on turning that $3,400 actually back to the towns, because that was under an IMA, where some of these other years, if we have any extra funds, it'll just go back to the region, because we funded it. And other than that, I've given you, I've given you a summary of the S R grants, S R 1, S R 2, S R 3, sort of our thought process right now of how those are going to be spent, and how much each of them are. So as we get further into the year, we'll provide you some updates on that, and we will definitely be talking at a future meeting more about the S R 3 grant. That was a larger grant that came out of the American Rescue Plan, that has a few more stipulations around how it needs to be spent, so we're working on that right now. It's a little early in the process, we have, until, we have almost three years to spend that grant, so there's no need to rush right out of the gate and spend it, and I think we're taking the fall in order to accumulate the data and really synthesize what we need to use that money for, so I think we'll be allowed to sort of file the initial grant application, that's due on October 4, in more of a broader bucket type sumaria, not knowing that we don't have all the activities clearly defined yet, because it's still early, coming back to school and trying to figure out where, where we are. Thank you so much, for always leading the charge and doing such amazing things. Questions for Don? Thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to our second read of our mask policy. This is, we have the first read at the end of August, and it's our face covering policy, we always do a second read, so this hasn't changed, does anyone have any questions before I entertain a motion? Okay. Then I will say, in accordance with the CDC, Dussie, and our towns' Board of Health, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read of the Dover Sherburne face covering policy, as stated in our packet, that requires all people to wear masks while indoors, on our campus, and on our campus until further notice. There are the second.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I, I don't have to roll call?
No, you don't have to.
So can we do that again, all in favor? Is this just a read, or is it an approval?
It's an approval.
This is an approval.
Okay, I'll stay in for the last one, I'll stay in for this.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That leads us to our consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from June 8, and the communication about the high school field trip. Do I need to read the high school communication field trip? No, we just, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a comment on the minutes? There's one set of minutes that are not popping up on my screen right now, but there's a set of minutes that reference community comments, and it describes ethical violations discussed at the meeting, and I want to say alleged.
Do you want to look at my copy?
Sure. There's a different set of minutes. Are you looking at the June 8, community comments, or multiple comments from community members addressing the recent election for a regional school committee in Dover? Falling school rankings, curriculum content, and the ethical violations that were referenced in the resignation of a committee member earlier this school year. Yeah, I think we should say alleged ethical violation.
Alleged, okay. Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda with Lynn's edit.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. I'll stay.
Okay. Thank you. I know the hour is getting late, we have communication in our packet for our own information, and then items for October, the October 12 meeting, please feel free to reach out to me with any items that you want addressed, put on the agenda. Maggie?
I do realize that the night is getting late, but before we adjourn, I just would like your point of permission to just share some gratitude for our, I don't want to say departed, I want to say retired school committee members, which has been our practice for really all the history of time, that I, we have worked, many of us have worked on the school committee, is that right?
Oh, please, yeah.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to the community, and gratitude for the work of our two former school committee colleagues. Part of, I think, what's been lost in the Zoom meetings, and the sort of constant emergency, is an opportunity to stop and thank our former colleagues for the many, many thousands of hours of volunteer work that they've done on our behalf. Michael Jaffe served our Dover and regional community over the past five years, spending three years on the Dover School Committee and two on the Regional Committee. During this time, Michael has been a fierce advocate for the needs of all our children. He was the driving force behind the return to examine the school's start time issue, and was the co-chair of that task force for quite a period of time. His research skills were unparalleled, continue to be unparalleled, and Michael would always be counted on to do his homework and to present carefully researched analysis in support of issues related to student mental health, and the positive benefits that might come from providing our adolescents with a school schedule that more closely matches their need for rest. It is not an exaggeration to say that without Michael's leadership, the challenging of, the challenge of addressing start times would have never made it out of committee meetings. We are grateful for his work in supporting all our students, his commitment to examining our programs with a critical eye at every juncture. While Michael is no longer serving with us on the Regional School Committee, the lasting impact of his dedication to students remains evident across the region. We wish him well in his future endeavors, and appreciate his continued service to the school community, community as the co-leader of the Guidance Advisory Council this year. I'd also like to take a moment with deep appreciation to recognize the service of our newly-retired colleague, Anne Hovey. Anne has been a tireless volunteer for the Sherburne and the regional schools. I believe she served two terms on the Regional School Committee, as well as one year as its chair. During that time, Anne was known to advocate for the whole child, and to ensure that our schools kept student needs at the forefront of all that we do. When joining the Regional School Committee in 2016, Anne used her institutional knowledge to inform all that she did to serve, to inform everything she did to serve our communities. Her thoughtful and thorough approach to sensitive matters was appreciated by all of us who worked alongside her. Anne prepared meticulously for each and every meeting, and served as the de facto chair in her second year, when our chair needed to be away frequently to attend to some unexpected personal issues. She assumed those unexpected responsibilities with grace and diligence. Anne led the Regional School Committee as the chair through the first stages of our COVID emergency, and facing, with us facing the need to implement remote learning, she worked collaboratively with our leadership to bridge the gap between the challenges faced by a school system in response to a health emergency, and to our families escalating concern about the state of their children's school experience. Undaunted by that challenge, Anne transitioned to lead our superintendent search last fall. She collaborated with our local school district search team members and a search firm to conduct a thorough and thoughtful search in the midst of an ongoing health emergency. Though that search did not yield a successful candidate, Anne's graceful leadership and attention to detail has continued to serve us all, as we completed an interim search, and will begin the search for a permanent superintendent this fall. While we are sad to lose Anne at the Regional School Committee, we recognize the long and lasting positive impact that her work has had on our school community, and wish her well in the future. Please join me in offering our appreciation to former members for their dedication to making our community better, for the countless hours that they have volunteered in service to our school, our community, and most of all, for the betterment of our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Maggie. Thank you. And finally, you thought you were going to get away with no thanks from us. I would also like to extend a huge gratitude to Scott Kellit, who will be retiring in a few weeks, after several years as a teacher, three years as assistant principal, and eight years as principal of the Dover Sherburne Middle School. Did I get that correct? Scott's quiet, strong, and supportive leadership will be deeply missed by students, staff, and parents. Middle school can be a tough couple of years for many kids, that was certainly the case for me. It takes a special person to understand and love that age group. Scott, the depth at which you care for your students and staff has created a happy and thriving place, where kids are supported wherever they are in their journey of academic and social learning. There are numerous obvious ways in which Mr. Kellit has supported his students and staff, but I think many of us will remember him for the quiet and thoughtful things that he did that might have gone undetected. Mr. Kellit has always loved the underdog, like the child who quietly managed their personal challenges on their own. He always found a way to support them daily with a joke, a welcome, a story, or his own special hello. So with tremendous thanks, we wish you a wonderful retirement, you will be deeply missed.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody. It's late, we have the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone.